Good afternoon. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. I am Councilman Isaac Gitzis Schleifer, Chair of the Committee. To my right is Councilman Conway, to my left is Councilwoman Ramos, and Councilman Burnett. We are going to start with LO 24-0068, the Legislative Oversight on Charter Review Commission. We're going to hear from members of the commission. We will start with Julianne Montes. Co-Chair of the Commission. Push the right button. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson. It's Julianne Montez Deoka, and I was proud to represent Councilwoman Ramos's district on the commission. And when Councilwoman Ramos saw volunteers for this commission, one of the reasons that I volunteered was because of just how hard the charter is to read and how it could be better. And I have a history in legislative drafting, and I wanted to do so many things to make it better to read. And if you look at the 2018 Charter Review Commission report, it went along those lines. It was wholesale revisions, getting rid of lots of things that don't belong in the charter. It was a big overhaul. This year, we didn't go for such a big overhaul. This commission really targeted just a couple of areas. And I, in my head, I lumped those into two areas. We targeted giving citizens a voice and keeping the citizens' voice strong. And then we also looked at increasing how often the charter is reviewed. So if you flip to page nine of the report, it lists out very nicely the five recommendations that the Charter Review Commission gave. And the first four are what I lump into that keeping citizen voice strong category. First was to counter the petition-based charter amendment funded primarily by David Smith with a charter amendment to reduce the city council to 12 members. The second was to give voters the power of referendum. Third, to support a city council charter amendment that would clarify the role and mission of the Department of Legislative Services. And fourth, to increase non-majority party representation on the Charter Review Commission. And then the fifth one is looking at the charter more frequently. And the recommendation there, it was debated a lot of different ways. Should this be a standing Charter Review Commission, similar to how Montgomery County is? Should it be moved up to every presidential election, a different sort of cycle? And what we ultimately landed on was to increase the frequency of the Charter Review Commission's establishment while allowing the city council president to convene the Charter Review Commission if the mayor fails to do so within a timely manner. And the frequency we recommended was every four years on the presidential cycle. So those are, let me try that again. That is a very brief synopsis of the five recommendations contained in the report. I know you have the report, so I won't try to read it to you. But if you have any questions, we are happy to answer them. And I know a couple more members of the commission would like to speak.
Okay, thank you. So how did you guys decide on these topics? Because as you said, there's, you can literally close your eyes and flip the pages of the charter and find something that needs to be changed or corrected or clarified. So how'd you pick these?
Well, these are the five that made it all the way from a committee, voted out by the committee, through the full commission, and received a vote to wind up in the report. There were other items that were discussed in both committee and by the full commission that did not make it all the way out to the report. So I wouldn't say we set out focused on these areas, but these are the areas that came out in the end.
Gotcha. Anybody have any questions? Councilman Burnett?
Not much of a question. I just want to thank you all for your work. It's always good to have some of the, I think, some of the sharpest minds in the city take another look at the charter and that sort of legislative review, which I think is always necessary and good practice. And I was supportive of this as a charter amendment to establish it. And when I got the report, I was like, it's always good to see things come to fruition. So I just want to thank you all for your service and time digging through the charter, which is not the most exhilarating read or fun read, but is, I think, good for the city. And I, you know, I read through the recommendations. Some I agree with, some I don't. But again, I want to thank you all for your work in that. And hopefully, you know, we can use this to build on and guide the body moving forward as somebody who'll be Citizen Burnett soon enough to still watch and the city move forward with good policy. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to echo my colleague. Thank you all for your work. I had the opportunity to testify before the body at one point about a couple of ideas, which one of them made it in here, but I think you already had it, so it's fine. It was the DLS-DLR recommendation.
There you go. I'll lend you mine for one question.
For one? Oh my gosh, musical, microphones. Here we go. Okay. Sorry about that. And here I was concentrating. Again, thank you very much for your work. I really appreciate it. The, um, one of the recommendations that I know I talked with several of you about because I was able to testify before the body was the DLR, establishing DLR as a separate entity, not part of Mayor City Council, which it used to be, and then also expanding its capacity. Do you want to go into a little bit more detail about your recommendations?
If memory serves me right, this was a matter that Andy Ellis had a lot of work on, so I'm going to defer to him on this answer.
The one that looks like a person speaking. So yeah, I mean, I think your recommendations were really helpful to us. This was something we had already been discussing a little bit of. And I think our idea was that that section of the charter that describes that department does, kind of does too much and too little at the same time. It's, it has a lot of words, but there's a lot of ways that things are not very clear. And so what we thought was that we should expand and we should clarify the mission of it so that, you know, it drafts, publishes, and archives all law, regulation, and policy for the Baltimore city government. And I think the "all" part of it is to make it so that it is a check that everything has to go through and not just some things. And then we wanted the, you know, the drafts, publishes, archives, we thought was a summation of the things that were described in the charter right now, but a more specific way to put that.
Okay, yeah, because your paragraph here isn't as full as I think the discussion that we had. Obviously, you don't need to put all the notes in the review. So I was just curious as to any other discussion.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, we had different language before you testified before the committee or the commission. But I think we ultimately decided you had a good grasp of it, and we would like to see the council bring something forward. But what we wanted to do was to provide direction about where we would like to see the council go and leave the wording up to you all instead of making a very, you know, instead of drafting language. We wanted to echo the sentiment that you were bringing forward and take the parts of it that we were certainly in agreement with, but leave it up to you all to draft the specific language.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then the second question I had was around the recommendation for 12 members of the council rather than 14. Can you go into detail about your recommendation?
Should I take this one, or do you want to?
Sorry, musical presenters. I'm sorry about that.
No, it's okay. So on this one, it really comes down to nullification. We were looking at the idea of nullification. If there are two items on the ballot that contradict each other, they cannot both go into effect if they both pass. But in looking at the idea of nullification, we didn't want to suggest changing the number of council seats to something absurd. There's no reason to put on there, "Let's go to 24 council seats." That just has no relation. But if you looked at the number of people that each council person represents, I might have this math a little wrong, but the number 3,000 sticks in my head that if you go from 14 to 12, it's about 3,000. I could be wrong.
It's a difference of 3,000.
A difference of 3,000, yes. 3,000 citizens that would roughly be in your district.
No, uh-uh. It would be a difference of 3,000 because right now we represent 41,000 residents.
Right, so that you would increase by 3,000. That number seemed palatable when you're considering all the services that council people provide in their district and the ability to connect with people and reach out. Comparing that to dropping from 14 to eight, where you're nearly doubling the number of citizens, in searching for a number for our suggestion for nullification, 12 seemed reasonable. It seemed like a number that if the other ballot measure was off and gone, that a switch from 14 to 12 would still be logical. And so that's how we wound up at the number of 12. But really, the whole impetus for suggesting that, the discussion had gone into redistricting and thoughts, different people's thoughts on how redistricting should happen. But once the other ballot measure was certified, we really felt that it should be suggested to nullify that item.
Julianne, can I add one part to that?
Yeah.
The other piece of that was that several of the people on the commission, namely Dean Hartley, Roger Hartley from the University of Baltimore, suggested that as the population has in fact decreased in Baltimore City since 2002, when we last restructured the council, the percentage of decrease was about 10%. And that made more sense if we were going to decrease the council as a result of the size of population decrease. So question H decreases the council by about 40% or over 40%. And the suggestion was if we do need to decrease because of a population decrease, we should look at the amount of population decrease and decrease the council, you know, concurrently. So, you know, we didn't want to leave an even number. So two out of 14 was better than eight, or six out of 14 to be concurrent with the population and Dean Hartley's opinion. And he, you know, he emphasized not just the nullification part of it, but also the, if there is a legitimate population decrease, we should have the council shrunk by that size concurrently.
Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it. I have a couple other questions, but I'll yield to my colleagues. Okay, okay. I have a couple others. So the Charter Commission, my understanding of the Charter Commission was that it is a body to look through the entire charter. So I know that when I testified, my colleague from the third also testified that same day. And we actually came up with one of the same recommendations, which was on procurement reform. And so I guess, I guess my question is, some of the recommendations seem very much in response to sort of outside forces as opposed to running city government. And so how did we get to that part? I mean, don't you think that we need to be able to look into some of the mechanisms of the charter that some of us had brought up that are like city government running functions that we need changes to? I think it's great what you, well, I don't agree with everything, but I think that the, you know, looking at public participation is a good thing. But there's a lot of other things in the charter that have to be changed relative to actually city government running. And one of them was our recommendation on best value versus, you know, lowest bid, which is really humongous. And I know that we were expecting a charter amendment from the administration on that. I don't know where it is. But anyway, I'm just trying to understand a little bit more about the commission's work in moving in that direct. I mean, the DLR thing, obviously, because I thought it was a good idea too, is a good thing. I just, you know, there's some things that are just fundamental city government things that we, you know, need to look into. Thanks.
We've now been joined by Councilman Torrance and Councilwoman President Middleton. Did you, you had a question?
He was before.
Go ahead, sure. Did you want to answer? What do you want? Go ahead.
I'm just listening to, there's a delay between Charm TV and your, so I'm still listening to your question. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I am Reverend Kobe Little. I serve as one of the co-chairs of this Charter Review Commission. I did want to recognize, in addition to Andy and Juliana, we have Devon Love here, and we have Joshua Harris, who are also members of, oh, I'm sorry. And we wanted to also recognize the staff, including Ben, who helped to facilitate the work of the commission. To your question about the work of this commission, let me start by saying that our goal was for this commission to be a forum for the articulation of the people's will and to have as much public input and citizen input into the review process of the charter, of the city charter. Before this commission ever got started, it was politicized. And then the work of the commission was delayed. And so we did not get a, an ample amount of time to perform an exhaustive review of the charter. We got started during the holidays at the end of the year in 2023. This commission should have been convened several years ago, not, let alone several months ago. Then the commission elected a chair who subsequently resigned. And it was, the task fell upon the co-chairs, in addition to Juliana, Terrell Boston-Smith was also a co-chair, and the rest of the commission to reassemble the commission and refocus our work. And so by the time February came around, we didn't have time or capacity for an exhaustive review of the city charter. And then, to your question about responding to external forces as opposed to reviewing the charter, and, you know, members of the commission who are here present can differ with my interpretation of events. But my interpretation of events was that it was, generally speaking, the commission's view that the size of the city council did not need to change. So that part of the charter was fine. But we also recognized that there was a threat to that part of the charter, which you have referred to as an external factor. And so as Andy articulated, the goal was to preserve as much as possible the status quo in terms of the council size. From day one, I articulated a vision for this commission that embraced democracy, both in terms of how the charter is structured and what the charter says, and also equally important in terms of how this commission conducted its business. So we were left in the position where we needed to make some recommendations, but were not able to make all the recommendations that we wanted. And we're not, and we're also not able to give full consideration to the numerous proposals that came from members of the council and the public. We are grateful, but we had a timeline. Even though this process didn't abide by the law, the commission attempted to hold itself accountable to the constraints of the law. And so rather than presenting a report to you all for the first time today, we submitted our report at the beginning of June, our written report at the beginning of June, which would give the council some time to reflect and act on it if they so chose. As has already been articulated by Juliana, our fifth, our fifth recommendation is that this commission operate much more like a standing commission so that there is time to fully review the charter, to modernize the document, and then also to take into consideration contemporary issues that may call for a change in the charter. And hopefully, to create a commission that is more durable, less susceptible to political interference, and much more empowered to reach out to the citizenry and to have public hearings where we're really able to get significant input from the citizenry. That wasn't the case. At the risk of being too frank, we spent a lot of time working to preserve the commission after the chairman resigned and just trying to keep everybody on the same page. In the end, I think that we built a positive and productive team, but the time was out.
Thank you. I appreciate your answer. Thanks.
Can I add to that real quick? The charter said that we're, the charter said that we're supposed to have 13 months of this commission. We started in November of 2024. The holidays came, and then session started. Many of the best people who are going to be on the commission are also busy in Annapolis during session. So by the time that we got to your recommendations, we were scrambling to try to get this report out. And I think that's part of the reason that we put in here that the commission had, that we put the fifth recommendation in there because our experience was that we didn't have time to do the exhaustive work necessary, nor did we have time to take in advice from all of the council people that we would have liked to hear from. So I hear you on that, and I wish we could have gotten that in there. And I had talked to Councilman Dorsey at the very beginning of the process about getting some of those recommendations that you and he agreed on. But the way that the commission worked, we just didn't, we ran out of time. And the time that we did have was very inconvenient for the people who may have the best legislative minds who are also in Annapolis during much of the time the commission was meeting.
Councilman Conway?
I want to first thank you, Reverend Little. I appreciate the explanation. It's really, really helpful to understand how we got to where we are. I think your recommendations are really helpful. And through all the sort of struggles that you have had as a commission in order to get to this point, I agree this is an important exercise. I think for the overall success and continued pruning and improving of our charter going forward. And it really helps to have a dedicated team of folks to spend the time and go through it. I also, I just, I really appreciate the transparency around the council size question. At the risk of being too frank as well, frequently as we get questions about the size of the council, you know, I'm trying to toe the line about the issue, you know, "Do I think the council needs to be reduced?" Not, no, actually, I don't. But, you know, when the commission put forward a recommendation of 12, sure, maybe it's something we should talk about. But it's really interesting, and I think this is important for anybody who's watching this hearing to understand. The only reason that that was even recommended was in part to nullify the proposed amendment that was put on by signature. And so that really wasn't a focus of the commission until, of course, that ballot measure was confirmed on the ballot. So it's really helpful for me to understand where you guys are coming from, why that recommendation came through. And certainly, I guess we could have the conversation about whether or not it makes sense. But in sort of reading the piece in the report, there's not really much to justify even a reduction to 12 except to not have it be a reduction in near half, so.
Let me just, thank you, first of all, Councilman. But let me just underscore that reduction to 12 was to prevent that recommendation. I mean, it's a moot point now, the ballots are out, but that recommendation was to prevent a reduction to eight. It is my view, and I think a view commonly shared among the members of the commission, that democracy in our city is under attack. And so if I had a recommendation to the council, I think if we had a recommendation to the council that's not written in this report, it would to be very, we would recommend that you be very thoughtful about being stewards of the democracy in our city and to be thoughtful about how you can use the tools available to you to increase civic engagement and to structure the way city government operates and to structure the charter in a way that allows the most vulnerable, the least powerful of us to be equivalent to the most secure and the most powerful of us, to have equal voices in the say of our city government, such that an individual would not simply be able to buy a ballot initiative onto the ballot and then by passage, but that we would have mechanisms, including Charm TV, to have an informed public and to entice and engage public so that our city is not run by a moneyed class, but it is run by all of the people, and we have a city that's for the people.
I agree. Information is certainly power in that regard. The, this is actually a question I think I have for the administration, sort of tagging along to Councilwoman Ramos's question around the procurement proposal that was supposed to come. I believe one of the things we discussed in the Public Safety Committee over the summer was questions about the procurement system and what changes we could make. I believe the discussion at the point was to pull procurement out of the charter altogether and to place it into the code. We were waiting, I think, as a council for that bill, and it didn't happen. The Charter Commission also didn't have an opportunity to review the idea. I'm curious what happened and why we weren't able to see that on the ballot this time around.
Yeah, and I'll take that back to the mayor and executive team and, you know, kind of get a more refined answer for you on that.
Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate that. So just as a follow, I will get as a follow-up. Thank you.
Councilman?
Yes. Can I add a part about that as it relates to the Charter Commission? One of the things that I think is necessary as we're calling for reform to the Charter Commission is to make it clear that the council has a charge to the commission. So if the council wants the commission, if the council is convening the commission and wants it to take up the procurement, I think it would be great if we knew that at the beginning of it so that we're able to wrangle with those tough questions. Because we're doing this part-time, right? We're doing it part-time. We're doing it after our day jobs. And so if the council wants there to be specific things, I think that it would be a good idea when it is convened to let the commission know that those are sections of the charter that they would like to see reviewed and put those presentations at the beginning. I can't speak to why the administration didn't do it, but for us, I think it would have been much clearer if we had that charge from you all at the convening of the commission.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So it was interesting, we, as a council, were talking about the issue, noting some frustration that vendors had had with the purchasing process and the ability, just a number of issues with purchasing in the city. We had a hearing about it in Government Operations Committee. And when we talked about it, we had the new person from purchasing come and talk about the new process and what they were looking at changing. And he specifically said that it was being considered with the Charter Review Commission. And so we assumed that this would be one of the things in the report, which is why my colleague brought it up. It seems we may have mixed signals there. Maybe the message wasn't passed, and, you know, that's something we can certainly address in the future. But I appreciate, you guys are volunteers. I get it. I definitely get it. And, you know, there's no finger pointing or anything. Yeah, I think, you know, this is, I think, an opportunity for us to learn from this process. This is the first time we've done it. It's hit a couple of speed bumps, but I think ultimately it's been successful in having strong recommendations for the council to consider. And I think it's incumbent upon us to take these and think about it into the future. So certainly, I didn't bring it up to question at all the commission as much as we learn about some of the intricacies of timing and the council's ability to pass these messages, how we do that through the administration or through legislation or whatever else. I don't know how we want to do that in the future. We want to make sure that you guys do know what some of our priorities are, questions that we have seen through government operations at the Charter Review Commission might want to consider. So, yeah, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to recognize Ms. Doris Manner Terrell, who's here. She was an active member of our commission. And I'd also like to take the personal privilege to thank Comptroller Bill Henry for appointing me to the commission. And I would like to recognize the staffs of the mayor's office and the comptroller's office and the council president's office, who also provided support to the commission in addition to the support that Ben in his office provided. I can say to you, members of the council, that I am certain that members of the commission are willing to continue this work as part of an ad hoc study group and to make recommendations. Obviously, the window for changing the charter this year has closed, but I think that there is a willingness to continue in this work. And, you know, we would certainly welcome the opportunity to have a conversation with that. Finally, just to be clear about the delays, I think I was appointed to this commission two years before I even got seated, right? And the best-case interpretation of that delay is that perhaps there was a lack of clarity about whose job it was to make sure that the first meeting was held. But I'm being far too gracious in making that analysis, right? From where I sit, the work of this commission was delayed as a way to mute the power of this commission. And I would encourage the council, in its oversight capacity, Mr. Chairman, to look at and to examine how, when the law requires multiple entities to appoint individuals to a city body, how you make sure that that timeline is met and kept. Like, who holds the mayor or whoever the appointing authorities are, the council president, the comptroller, even individual members? Who holds them accountable to make sure that these boards and commissions actually meet when they're supposed to meet?
Okay. Thank you. A question for Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had an added request on to the procurement conversation because I know that it's been disconnected, but a part of the conversation has to be because we started this process in unbundling contracts so that we can have greater minority participation in city buying. So what I want to do is bring it back because I think the urgency in either changing our charter to best value or putting it into the code is necessary as we're unbundling DPW contracts, as we're even creating an entire website just for minority-owned businesses to actually be marketed to our agencies. I think there's this, I just want to echo a sense of urgency, but also make sure that it's connected because I don't want to lose ground on the fact that we've gone through this process of creating an office. And a number of minority-owned businesses have echoed to me in meetings that like, this is a perfect opportunity when we have a chance to change the charter so that we continually have access for people that look like me, who do business in the city, that employ people that look like me in the city, to be have access to just city funds, to actually do the work that we need to get done. So I just want to echo that, but also say that I think that we should seriously have an agreement in place before the new council starts so that we can start working on it with the new members as they come in as well.
Councilor President?
You overlooked me. I just wanted to, I had, I did have a number of questions, but I just want to thank you, your explanation, just really reviewing everything, the process, really cut off all of those questions. And something that stuck with me that you mentioned when you said democracy is under attack, I totally agree with you. Our city is definitely under attack. I was one of the first people that kind of started with the 14-member district and was a participant when, or an advocate when it was a different way before the 14 members. So I'm definitely a strong supporter of maintaining the 14-member district. And as you move forward and review that, also, as you are working part-time, remember, we are considered part-time, even though we don't work in that capacity. Otherwise, we are, I would have been gone a long time ago. And as you are also, you know, stressing population, for me, that is not the most important thing to really look at. It's the issues of our city, the issues that are in comparison from our surrounding counties. It's, you know, our city is, we're double of the problems and the things that we have to deal with in a part-time position. And a lot of times, those things are overlooked. I just, again, I appreciate this commission, and I just want to let you know that because of my longevity and things that I have experience and know, I'm there to help as well. When you have meetings, please call on some of that experience that I have. And I want to stress that as council members too, we, you know, we continue to grow every year and every term. And there, in my eyes, there are things that would prohibit us from growing ourselves and helping if we, if this, if this process that, or this charter that we're in is disrupted, it's really going to hurt the city as well. And I'm talking about, you know, best practices and things that we do. I served as the president of the Maryland Association of Counties, and that would have never happened if we didn't have the four-year terms and the not being term limited and all the things that are coming before us. And those are important things, those are also very important pieces in the work that we do, the trips that we take. And those are to help us help our constituencies. So I just wanted to add that piece and just, again, thank you for giving that long explanation in your report.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And, you know, just to respond to, I agree with the point that you made, and I will say that I am a longtime proponent of good government, but I don't think that you do justice to government or to citizens by limiting what they can do by tying up resources and closing down power. I'm not a big fan of Mayor Scott, I'll just tell you. But I'll tell you one thing, Mayor Scott should not have to come back to Baltimore if he's in DC for a conference. It doesn't make sense. Anybody who's, you all have all gone to League of Cities, you know, all of the different, those meetings start at 7:30, they end at 9 o'clock. You're lucky if you can get from your hotel room to the meeting room. If you have to spend 90 minutes in traffic each way, because it takes you a half an hour once you get to the DC border to get to wherever you're going in DC, it's three hours out of your day. And we actually handicap government by signifying and using these virtue signaling measures that really don't help democracy, they don't help governance. To be honest with you, I grew up with the Honorable Iris Reeves as my council hero, and I love the way that she worked with the very recently late Councilwoman Agnes Welch and Councilwoman Ricky Spector. The beauty of a three-member delegation for each council district is if I don't have a relationship or I have a bad relationship with one council member, my issue, my community's issue doesn't get cut out. So trust me when I say, it was not at all my intent to reduce the size of this council. I, in fact, think the council should be larger. Because it's not just about cost-cutting. You cut, you get what you pay for. You cut costs, you don't have the staff that each council member needs to do constituent services. And if you don't pay council members an appropriate salary, then their time and interest are divided, and it also opens up the door to conflicts of interest because people are trying to make a living. So, you know, my message to this council and to our city is that cutting costs can be a good governance measure, but it is not automatically one. And when we think about how we strengthen democracy, we ought to think long and deeply about what representation is and how we can guarantee that the most voices are heard. For me, the idea of shrinking the council is short-sighted. The idea of shrinking the council because of a shrinking population is short-sighted. Because aren't we trying to grow Baltimore strong? I mean, if we, I think we ought to believe that Baltimore is going to return to its greater numbers. I think we ought to believe that Baltimore is the crown jewel of this state. I think we ought to recognize that Baltimore is the capital of Black America. And we have the opportunity to expand the tax base through creative housing, we have the opportunity to rejuvenate our schools, we have the opportunity to show people all the good things that make Baltimore one of this country's greatest cities. But concentrating power in a way that allows developers and a few, by shrinking the council, concentrating power by shrinking the council, that allows developers and a few to dictate the future of the city is anti-democratic and it's not very charming at all. So thank you for your comments. I'm certainly in concert with what you've said. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to, I just want to also clarify, with this commission, and every commission has different compositions and they're appointed in different manners, this one actually happens to be one that the mayor's office probably has the least involvement. The mayor's office appoints a few members, just like the comptroller and the council president's office, as well as the council. And so really, this report, the onus is really on the city council to take the report, see what suggestions make the most sense, and then introduce legislation accordingly. The mayor is not really involved in that until a bill comes to his desk and, you know, he decides if he's going to sign it, veto it, or let it become law without his signature. And so I just wanted to clarify that point. This isn't one of those commissions that is controlled by the mayor like other commissions may be. And so I think one of the things that we tried to address in the fifth recommendation was the appointment process and the timing of the appointment, so that if it doesn't get appointed within a certain period of time, there's a fallback on it. Because one of the things that we saw that happened this time was that there was not anybody sort of responsible for convening the commission. So we wanted to make that fifth recommendation so that there would be, so that the council president would have responsibility after a certain period of time in order to get the commission going. So I think that clarification is important, and I think what we were trying to do was to add additional language to the charter amendment that passed in 2020 to make sure that the delay that happened this time didn't happen next time. Right. And also, I mean, just on that note as well, for us taking into consideration with that proposal, and it's definitely something that we should look at, we saw even here, you had mentioned that, and I wasn't aware of this until you had mentioned it, all the challenges that took place with whoever the person was that resigned. And so even when the appointments are made, oftentimes you do run into challenges like that. So even if they are made in a timely manner, like it seems like there was that commission, there are other challenges to that. So it's not one of those things that are just completely clear. In addition to that, I mean, some of these challenges and some of the things in this Charter Review Commission are more timely to current time as opposed to, you know, if the commission had met, you know, six years ago, the conversations would be completely different. We weren't talking about the size of the council six years ago. And so we just wanted to bring that up. So certainly, a constant refresh is good, and the engagement part is good. And that leads to my next question. You had mentioned a part about getting as many people feed, you know, as many, as much feedback as possible, which, you know, that's why we have our hearings open, we allow unlimited public testimony. I don't limit anybody in this committee. I let people come in and testify as long as they want. What community engagement has this commission had? Like, how many different meetings or public forums has it had before coming up with the report?
So we had one public hearing on the calendar, and there was no public input during that meeting. But we did hold the meeting open for at least a half an hour, maybe a little bit longer, to allow for people who may have had schedule conflicts and weren't able to sign up in advance or show up. But again, had we had more time, then I think we would have been able to have, you know, more effective, a more effective public outreach. I think Mr. Ellis mentioned, and I'll just say for good measure, that the bulk of our work took place during the legislative session. And I know for myself and Mr. Love and Mr. Ellis and Mr. Harris, we were also doing legislative advocacy at the same time. And so...
So is there anything, and forgive me if I'm not clear on the specific charter rules, but wouldn't there, I mean, is there any reason why the commission couldn't go around now with this final report and have meetings? I mean, because this stuff is not going to be acted on in this council term. This council term ends in a month and a half. And so session doesn't start up again before then either. And so does the commission, is the commission entertaining having any community engagements maybe in like each corner of the city over the next couple of months so that we can get the engagement? And then the incoming council could determine which of those things have widespread support that are worth introducing legislation on?
Well, trust me, Mr. Chairman, it was my desire to have multiple public hearings and to be able to move around the city so that these hearings were accessible, not only virtually, but also geographically accessible. But we made the difficult decision as members of the commission to try to comply with the timeline. And so we submitted our report in accordance with the council's timeline so that if one of the five, one or more of the five recommendations that we were making were recommendations that the council wanted to move forward with and have placed on the ballot for the ballot initiatives, that you would be able to do that. I mentioned earlier that many of us would be willing to operate as an ad hoc study committee or study group or study commission, but our understanding of the law around this commission is that at the end of this hearing, the commission ceases to exist. And so I, this is why we made the recommendation, this is why we made the recommendation.
Yes, I mean, I could probably fix that. And I don't see anybody from the law department, but, you know, I'm inclined not to, we don't have to, you know, vote this out or close this up. You know, we could recess, we could also recess when we're done answering all the questions and give you guys an opportunity to come back. You know, I can commit to having another closeout. I'm, you know, I can commit to having another closeout, finishing up the hearing and closing it out before the end of the term at a later date, if you wanted to set up.
You certainly could give us the charge to, you, you certainly could give us the charge to offer a supplement to our report and return to the council and report those findings at a later date, and that would give us more life, I'm assuming. But, I think, you know, there are a lot of ways for us to approach this.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, and Reverend Little beat me a little bit to it here. I of course defer to your own lawyers, but in the charter, it says that the Charter Review Commission shall complete its duties and submit its work to the mayor and city council no later than May 31st. And then, the next section, this is Section 2, Subsection B, dissolution, upon completion and submission, and if you remember, the prior section said submit by May 31st, the commission shall be deemed resolved. So, in my reading of this, we were dissolved when we submitted our report, not by this hearing today.
But if you feel like our report is incomplete, then we can keep working.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm not suggesting at all. This is more in response to what, what you had brought up as far as the community engagement part. So, you know, this, this report, you said it was, it was due May 31st, and so, you know, I have the copy of it, you know, we all have the copy that was, that it says June 5th. So, I mean, we're, we're past it anyways. What I'm saying is more just from a city standpoint and for, you know, whatever's in the best interest of the city as a whole, you know, this council, we can submit charter amendments any day of the week. And so, I think we're all up here willing to do that on items that, that are of importance. I think with the commission, you guys did some great work on this, I think it's also important, being that we all represent diverse groups in the city, that if the commission were to want to go and have community engagement sessions that they set up across the city, you may come back and say, look, you know, we had six community engagement sessions across the city, turns out, everybody is focused on items one, three, and five, there wasn't really any interest in two and four. And then, maybe that would, you know, prompt action of the city council, which is who ultimately would need to take action on, on submitting charter amendments.
Mr. Chair, I actually have a solution that might work out, because we won't be able to correct this era until, I believe, 26. So, it would be best that we work with the administration and others on interim ordinance that will allow us to implement the recommendations until such time a new commission has been revised or added to the charter amendment, which means that the interim ordinance will sunset as soon as the voters approve this commission again. So, it would be easier to do interim ordinance to continue the work, either at the beginning of the next term, and then wait until we get the charter amendment corrections done so that we can continue the work with the, with the commission.
The commission, yeah, thanks. The commission's recommendations, the commission's recommendations are charter amendments. So, we wouldn't be able to do that. But if we wanted, so, so, I think what we've, what we're asking is trying to get guidance on, you know, whether they, we can extend their work for the, for the public input. And the voters don't have to vote on a new commission every five, every 10 years, it just, it just happens. But they, I think that, that your case is that you want the commission to meet more often, so that there can be more input and they can deal with, you know, various topics, et cetera, et cetera. So, I, I see where my colleague is going. I don't, I think, I don't, we, we don't have the law department here to guide us, so I don't know if Aaron has a thought on this.
Indeed. The law department's only gonna recommend interim ordinance until we have a, the law department's gonna more likely recommend an interim ordinance, because if we're gonna continue the work, then that can be a study report on the actual charter amendments that we have forth, either as the council as a body or have them as advisory piece. But outside of that, there still needs to be an ordinance created to bring a chart, a correction to the charter amendment that we originally passed, because based off of how I read it, if we intend, if the legislative intent was to have something that was more dynamic, as the commission has articulated, then that means that we have to then create a, we then have to amend the charter to fix it. So, if we want them to do community outreach, we can create either a working body in the council to work alongside of them, or we can create an ordinance to allow them to continue to do their work until we fix the problem that we, that was created in the original charter amendment.
Yeah, so let, let me just, to, to wrap this up, because we're gonna have to get moving on to the next hearings momentarily, from, and I appreciate your feedback of my colleagues on that and some solutions going towards as we approach the next term and the, the next time this is set up. All I'm saying is from a committee standpoint, as well as a council member standpoint, is that I just look at specifically, you guys did a lot of great work on this, spent a lot of time on this, there's, there's recommendations here, which I'm sure members of the committee desire to see put into law. And so, that is still on the table, whether it's officially in the charter that, you know, this list here, or still the members of the committee, or you're just very concerned active citizens, either way, we've seen that one person with a petition can go and change laws. Certainly, this group can, can certainly do the same thing. And so, what I am offering as a chair of this committee to either this current former commission or just a group of concerned citizens, is that if you go out there and have those community engagement sessions across the city, like, like you said you were interested in doing, and you can get that done in the next month or, month or so, I'm happy to call for another hearing and hear the follow-up, and based on the feedback, you know, the feedback that you got, as long as we get it done before the end of this term, I can offer that to you and have you come back and say, here's the meetings that we had, and here's the feedback that we received. And from there, the members of, of this body can look at that and say, oh, you know, maybe that will be some of the first pieces of legislation we'd introduce in the beginning of next term, which would then end up on the, the 26th ballot. Just, just an, just an offer.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we three or five can speak for the 20 or so people that were on the commission today, but it does sound like an interesting offer. And, you know, I don't know what your thought on it is. I would obviously love to get more public input. The time between now and election day seems a little compact in order to try to get that, as some of us are working on question H right now, so.
Yeah, well, first, let, let us thank you for the offer. It is symbolically important and materially important. And I can speak for Kobe Little, and so, I would be glad to participate in that. And as Mr. Ellis said, you know, we can convey the offer to the other members of the commission and, and respond back and let you know what kind of feedback. I think, though, there is a core group of us that are interested in continuing this work around the charter anyway, and so, this may be an opportunity for us to think earnestly about how we organize to continue to do, do this work. Mr. Chairman and members of the council, there is one last very important thing that I need to say about this commission. There was nobody on the commission who identified as Latino. And we have a growing Latino community in our city. And while there are some members of the Latino community here in Baltimore who are generations upon generations in this country, many members of the Latino community in Baltimore are from, they have a recent history in the United States. And part of democracy strengthening is democracy invitation. And so, I want to encourage all the members of this council and everyone who happens to listen to this hearing, to be intentional about thinking about how, whether it's the Latino community or any other immigrants in our city, how we invite people who immigrate to the United States and to Baltimore, how we invite them to feel empowered to participate in the democracy. You know, as a human rights advocate, one of the things that we know is that people have all kinds of rights, and sometimes they know about those rights, but they still don't feel empowered to, to use those rights. And I tried very hard when this commission first convened to have some Latino members of our community appointed to the commission. Now, I was not an appointing authority, but I went out and recruited several people, and there were just issues that prevented those people that I tried to recruit from being able to participate. But there was no intentionality that I'm aware of, by any appointing authority, to make sure that there was at least one Latino member of the commission. So, democracy only works when diversity is valued, and democracy is stronger when we have a heterogeneous set of voices, right? Because people have different experiences, and if we leave out certain voices, then we diminish our capacity to be of and by and for the people. So, that's not a, a, an accusation or a blame point, that is an encouragement for, as we go forward, to see the Latino community in Baltimore and to desire to have their full participation in our democracy.
Yeah, I mean, that, that sounds good to me, and I certainly feel the same way, because when I look through all these, the various commissions on, on various levels of government, I, I don't see, I don't see, you know, the offer being extended to the Jewish community as well. And I look through this commission here, I don't really see anybody that I believe is, is Jewish on the commission either, with Baltimore being home to one of the largest Jewish populations in the country, certainly, those, those sentiments stand as well there. And so, I think it's, you know, it's important that all of these, that, that everybody in the city has, you know, has a seat at the table when it comes to these matters. So, thank you for that.
Can, can I add one last thing? I know you're trying to close up, but I want to direct everybody's attention to Appendix A. I reviewed every single charter amendment and ballot question in Maryland since 1999 for all of the charter counties and looked at how different counties handled this process. The Baltimore City Charter is 257 pages, the next biggest charter is the Baltimore County Charter at 58 pages, the next biggest one after that is Anarondale County at 51 pages. This nature of the charter means that we add a lot of questions to the ballot, and question, and Appendix A talks about that. And it also talks about the fact that the bond issues that we are forced to have on by, by the state legislature also clog up the ballot and mean that our ballot typically has 10 to 11 questions on it, when all the other counties, all the other charter counties have less. It also shows that the counties with more charter amendments on the ballot typically vote yes more on them, and it shows that places like Montgomery County, where they have, don't have to put bond issues on the charter and have an 18-page charter, reject one and four charter amendments. So, take a look at Appendix A, I think it's really useful. Ben has the data behind it, and I think that that's an important question as we're talking about why things pass and why things don't pass, is how big and long the ballot is, and I think there's good ways that we can fix it, and I think Appendix A speaks to that.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public testimony? Anybody who wishes to, to speak on this matter? Give the public an opportunity to...
I know you're gonna hate me for, I just want to, I'm sorry, what was that? Can I, can I ask a question regarding that specifically?
Sure, as a member of the public or a member of the council, which, whichever one, I was just...
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll just, so you, you mentioned that Baltimore City is, are we the only county, city that has to put our, our...
Three jurisdictions put bond issues on the ballot, Baltimore City, Prince George's County, and Baltimore County. Baltimore County and Prince George's do it by their own charter, Baltimore City does it as a matter of state constitution. So, there will need to be work in Annapolis in order to allow us to not have to do that. But we haven't failed a bond issue since 1970, and so, when we have four, or five, six, or seven of those on the ballot, by the time people get to the charter amendment, especially those that come by petition...
They've read 11 paragraphs of legalese.
Yeah, that's really helpful. I, I would encourage the administration to look into that, that piece and see if there's something we could do there at the state level with our partners. But thank you, I didn't know that.
All right. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on, on the Charter Review Commission? No? Okay, well, thank you very much to all the members of the commission who are here and all of them who are watching at home or at their office. Thank you for the work that you guys have done. The offer remains on the table from me to, to you guys, and so, you just follow up with me if that's something that you're gonna do. I would also please ask that if you do, schedule those to send us the chart, so that we could also participate in sending it out to the public, just as, you know, the administration does when, you know, they nominate a police commissioner, they go to all different parts of, of the city, they put out a chart with all the meetings. I think that would be very great if you guys did that. And we, I, I can speak on behalf of myself, I would, I'd be happy to send that around to my constituents as well, so they're aware of that opportunity. I think a lot of people would be willing to be engaged in the process. So, for now, we are gonna be in a recess for this, because we, we may come back and, and discuss this again. We will now move on to the executive appointments that we have to be heard today. So, for EA 24-0255, Eric Jackson, we received his, his letter. EA 24-0256, Andre Turner, are you here?
Yes.
Oh, come on up. So, I'll just give the instructions, since you're the first person. Just come up, state your name, and why you are interested in being a member of the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, and give us a little bit of background about yourself and what you'd like to see this commission do.
Good afternoon, my name is Andre Turner. I'm a father, grandfather, husband, worked with the University of Maryland, positive school center, out of the School of Social Work. My interest and concern is seeing opportunities for healing injustice, opportunities for reconciliation, opportunities to redress socio-political debt that is owed, based on the long historical injustices that are race-based and structural, in addition to disproportionate sentencing. Am I stopping talking?
I never take online testimony. I don't take online testimony.
Disproportionate injustice and sentencing that has impacted the African-American community, as well as Black families, that have not only had a significant impact, it has also had economic harm, and it's also a part of the gap and challenges that our communities have faced. And being a part of the commission, looking to see justice being served in the ways that like-minded individuals come together to support communities that are continuously and persistently having and facing socioeconomic challenges. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your willingness to serve. Anybody have any questions? Nope? Okay, thank you.
That's it?
That's it. Next up, EA 24-0259, Anthony Francis.
My name is Anthony Francis, here to serve District 9. I am interested in this line of work, because I am a community, longstanding community member of District 9 in Harlem Park. I have been a, a victim of, of redlining myself, I have been a victim of having to live in a community that is called a food desert. I have lived across the street from statistics, excuse me, statistically, one of the worst schools in Baltimore, as far as grade and reading level. And that is why I'm interested. I've, I've spent the last 15 years of my life trying to change the way that our Baltimore communities are looked at. I know that there are really, a really high amount of good people in the community where I live that need resources, and I'm, I'm quite frankly, a little bit tired of, of seeing good people not have access to basic human resources. So, that is why I am... So, that is why I am here. I should probably mention that I worked for Memorial Episcopal in Bolton Hill as the Director of Justice and Reparations for two and a half years. And I learned through that job that a lot of the, the legislation that was put in place back in the day was, was to hold us back, and some of those things are still holding us back. So, I'm, I'm hoping that we can change the way that homeownership looks, like starvation looks, drug abuse looks, and, and the level of education our kids get in our communities look. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions in the committee? Nope. You're good. Is there anybody else here that would like to come up and speak? Any other members of the commission? Go ahead, just come up and state your name.
Hello, good evening, afternoon. I'm Dr. Kalila Harris. I was also nominated for the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission by my councilwoman, Odette Ramos. I am especially honored to be nominated for this commission. I've done a great deal of work around how addressing the root causes of both the war on drugs and previous systems of racism have impacted not only the black community in Baltimore City, but the community at large. I look forward to working with this commission and with city council to ensure that people have access to resources equitably that will allow us to build a stronger Baltimore, just based on the hearing we were listening to before that causes people to want to move back into the city because they do feel like it is a place where not only black Americans and Latino people, new Americans, Jewish Americans, but we all can be in a place where this city is thriving and that our systems and resources are pointed in the direction of those root cause issues like housing, education, and other things that will really support our community to thrive. So, I want to thank you all. I know I've already been moved forward through confirmation. I look forward to coming before the full city council and again, working with you all hand in hand to make sure that our city truly is the greatest city in America. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is there anybody else who would like to come up and speak? Nope? Okay, give me one minute. We also are canceling EA 24-0258, Latrice Gant. She has withdrawn, and so we are not considering that today. And so, I will entertain a motion for EA 24-0255, Eric Jackson, member of the commission. Move by Conway, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ramos. Yeah, so I'm a, yeah, I'm an I.
Josh Leifer votes a I. Mr. Burnett is absent. Mr. Costello is absent. Vice President Singleton, Vice President Milton. Vice President Milton votes I. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes I. Mr. Torres.
Aye.
Mr. Torres votes I. Mr. Conway. Mr. Conway votes I. Mr. Chair, there are four votes in the affirmative, no negatives. We can go to second read at the next meeting.
Thank you. Next up, EA 24-0256, Andre Turner, two I have a motion. Move by Conway, seconded by Ramos.
Josh Leifer.
Yes.
Josh Leifer votes I. Mr. Burnett, Mr. Costello are absent. Vice President Middleton. Vice President Middleton votes I. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes I. Mr. Torres.
Aye.
Mr. Torres votes I. Mr. Conway.
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes I. Mr. Chair, there are four votes in the affirmative, no negatives. Second read at the next meeting.
All right, next up, EA 24-0259, Anthony Francis, member of the commission. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
Move by Torres.
Move favorable by, number Torres.
Second.
Seconded by Ramos.
Ramos. Josh Leifer.
Yes.
Josh Leifer votes I. Burnett and Costello are absent. Vice President Middleton. Vice President Middleton votes I. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes I. Mr. Torres.
Aye.
Mr. Torres votes I. Mr. Conway.
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes I. Mr. Chair, five, five votes in the affirmative, no negatives. We can move the second read at the next meeting.
All right. Next up...
Let me, let me correct, make, make, correct count. On 256, 255, 257.
Gotcha. Next up, EA 24-0257, Pastor Dr. Robert Turner from the Great Fit District. Please come up and state your name for the record and why you're interested in serving on this commission and, go ahead.
I'm Robert Turner, grateful to be here. Reparations has been my life's work, something that I've been actively engaged in all of my adult life, and recently authored a book, Creating a Coach of Repair, which lists the longest suggestions of repair to our deals done by an individual, the longest list of anyone in the world. Also, each month, I walk from Baltimore to the White House for reparations. Before coming to pastor at Empowerment Temple, I advocated reparations for the survivors of the worst race massacre in American history, 1921 Tulsa Race Massacre. And it's something that I speak on at least three or four times a month to groups across the nation, and I'll be honored to serve the city in which I live in, in the greatest council district also in the city of Baltimore, and for the most powerful place on the planet is where I serve as pastor of Empowerment Temple, and I'll be grateful to be considered.
Well, you sound very, very qualified for this commission. I wonder who found you for it?
The best district in Baltimore, so.
That's right.
Amen, counselor.
That's right. What's that? All right, thank you very much. Any questions from the, from the council? All right, I will move this nomination favorable. Do I have a second?
Favorable by Josh Leifer. Set it as the following. Josh Leifer.
Yes.
Josh Leifer votes I. Mr. Burnett and Mr. Costello are absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes I. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes I. Mr. Torres.
If I could explain my vote?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say it's an honor to vote to a fellow gentleman of Capitol Office of Attorney Incorporated, and understanding the beauty of achievement in every human endeavor, and I'm proud that he is a member of this commission. And with that being said, I vote aye.
Mr. Torres votes I. Mr. Conway.
Aye.
Conway votes I. Mr. Chair, there are five votes in the affirmative, no negatives. This nomination can go to second read at the next meeting.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, for joining us today. Thank you for your willingness to serve, and we are now adjourned.